Sixty.
Ready on the left?
Yeah.
Good evening. The Colfax City Council Meeting of December 11th, 2024 is now in session. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have representatives from Cal Fire?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the fight. I mean, I am a citizen of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible.
City Clerk, would you read the role?
Councilmember Veris.
Present.
Councilmember Hilberg.
Here.
Mayor Proton Loman.
Here.
Councilmember McCully.
Here.
Mayor Douglas.
Present.
Item one D. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda order?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. Motion carries. Statement one E. Statement of conflict of interest. Are there any council members that have any change in their?
No change.
Oreo. Okay. Item two. Consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the calendar or does somebody like to pull? Is this or any comment from the public on the consent calendar? Hearing none and receiving blank stares. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval of consent.
Second.
Leading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries. We move on to. What do we move on to the city?
Agency reports. Uh, Bachelor County Sheriff.
Bachelor County Sheriff reports.
Highway Patrol.
Highway Patrol. I just want, make it earn your money, I knew, which I just was testing you.
Hi, good evening, Council. Officer Jason Lyman, California Highway Patrol, Gold Run area, Public Information Officer. Uh, over a few statistics here for you for last month. We issued uh, 266 citations and we had a total of 490 enforcement contacts with, you know, including all the verbal warnings and all that kind of stuff. Uh, we had uh, 211 motor services for, you know, people broke down and stuff like that on the side of the road. Two arrests, thankfully no fatalities last month. We had a total of 34 collisions. Ten were injury collisions and 24 were just property damage only. We are coming up on another little storm coming up here, starting late tonight, early tomorrow. Uh, gonna have some snow and rain. Uh, just as a reminder for everybody, please slow down. Bring, be prepared, bring your chains, know how to put them on. Have all your property vehicle in proper maintenance, good tires, good windshield wipers, and especially good amounts of windshield washer fluid in there that's actually the kind that doesn't freeze. So you can see with all that spray kicking up on the road. Uh, they have been really uh, working very diligently the last couple of weeks on uh, trying to pick up a lot of the construction that's going up there. Uh, they've hauled away biggest majority of all the K railing and stuff right now. They're working, they're hoping by next week to have it all picked up so that when the snow is there, they can plow it and clear the roads effectively. Uh, but they have probably picked up, you know, 75 or 80% of it as of today. So they're, and they're working very quickly on trying to get that picked up. So it'll be all back to normal for the rest of the winter and then they won't start back until springtime. Does anybody have any questions for me? Thank you.
Uh, before we go to our next agency report, I did want to mention, I forgot to say there, it looks like there's a typo on the agenda on the consent calendar on the second uh, portion of the transit funding item. So 2D, part two, um, when you look at the amount of the transit assistant funds, it looks like we have a period instead of a comma. So I just want to notate that for the record and make sure that does not change anybody's vote. No one here interpreted that as $17, correct? Okay, thank you. Just wanted to get clarification for the record.
Next, Cal Fire.
Good evening, Clint Seaver, Cal Fire and the City of Colfax, local battalion chief. Um, filling in for Chief Counts who's down in Franklin Fire in Malibu this week. So filling in for him tonight. We had a total of two vegetation fires, two structure fires and two vehicle fires uh, last month. We were able to get the tree out of the new demonstration force and that was brought down and set um, by our resources. Uh, and then we are fully staffed for Winterfest and the Santa Parade that's coming up this next month. We will be fully staffed until December 16th, which is kind of new, but we will remain with the two engines out of Colfax all winter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is nonprofit. Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Council, everybody. My name's Amanda Palmquist with the Colfax Area Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to remind everybody that we have Winterfest coming up this Saturday. We're really excited. It will be 12 to 8, rain or shine. I know there's been some concern, but we will be there regardless. We have um, Bunco Babes will be hosting Pictures with Santa in the theater. We have food vendors, uh, craft vendors, food trucks. We'll have live music, a DJ and a beer garden of sorts in the art park like last year. And there will be Caroling Under the Gazeebo by Colfax Baptist Church until the Lions Parade starts about 6:00 PM and then thanks to the city, we will finish it off with fireworks at 8 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other nonprofit? Hearing none, we move on to presentations, item four, there are no presentations. We move on to five, public hearing. There are two public hearing. The first one is a new sidewalk repair, maintenance and liability ordinance. City Planner, would you please address that?
So I do want to say really quickly that the sidewalk ordinance did not make it in the full agenda packet, but there are copies of it on the table. And do you have my PowerPoint? Good evening, Kathy Pease. I'm a planning consultant to the city of Colfax. I'm here tonight to introduce a proposed sidewalk ordinance. The city currently doesn't have one, um, so we are bringing this forward. Next slide. So uh, the state of California has established um, going back to 1935 that the um, obligation for maintenance of sidewalks is typically by adjacent property owners. And this can also be found in the California Streets and Highways Code of the state, um, which also established adjacent property owner's obligation. So a majority of cities have adopted a similar sidewalk ordinance. So obviously there is benefit in making sure that the sidewalks are well maintained. It provides safe travel for pedestrians and others. Next slide. Um, there are legal and fiscal impacts of broken sidewalks. There's liabilities if folks get hurt. And uh, there's also a requirement to make sure that the sidewalks remain accessible for those with disabilities. Um, so we've drafted a sample letter. If it comes to our attention that there's a broken sidewalk, what typically could happen is that the city engineer would provide a letter to the property owner, letting them know and documenting um, that sidewalk needs to be prepared or repaired. Property owner would have 60 days to make that repair. So if the property owner fails uh, to make that repair, um, this, the owner would still be responsible for paying the cost of all work. Um, it could be repaired by the city, but then the city would recoup the costs. And if ultimately there was no payment, that could result in a lien on the property. Next slide. Um, I did want to let the council know there is a provision uh, in the draft ordinance that would allow folks to uh, appeal such a decision. And if they did, it could come to a formal hearing before the city council and you guys would have an option to review that and be the final decision maker. This would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. It doesn't um, uh, it isn't deemed a project. There are exemptions for um, repair and maintenance or minor alterations. So tonight we're asking that you um, consider this, conduct a public hearing and uh, waive the first reading and schedule it for the next second reading at the next regular city council meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Could you walk me through what the expectation would be if a member of the public gets a notice? Cause I can think of, you know, dozens of places in town where this is likely to happen. They get notice. We live in a very impoverished community. They're like, what the heck is this?
Right.
What would the process look like to work with the city reasonably to do that? Because that, one, isn't uh, it's not a small task. Um, two, there are very, there's a very specific way you have to go about doing it so that it doesn't turn into a train wreck. And again, it is expensive.
Yeah, exactly.
And I can reasonably anticipate that it would be prohibitive for most property owners in the city to, to be able to perform on that within 60 days. So what, what would our process look like in layman terms for somebody who gets this notice and is trying to do the right thing, but doesn't have the means, time or bandwidth to do the, do what needs to be done according to state law?
Yeah, I would recommend that they'd meet with our city engineer and look at what the options are to repair it. Probably would get a, a cost estimate from a contractor that would typically do sidewalk repairs. I look to Ron and, and Shanna on this, on what the options are for funding, but um, you know, I, I understand and I do think we want to work with folks.
Right, exactly. If I may, Council uh, member. The city has been out repairing sidewalks where the city trees have destroyed them and the cost has been pretty minimal. So it's not, we're not gonna ask you to replace a whole panel.
Right.
If it's just lifted somewhere, we're just gonna ask you to fix the tripping hazard on it. And that is a quick creep makes a product that smooths right over, stays permanent and is a minimal cost to do and even the average homeowner could do it.
So with that in mind, when you say minimal cost, um, you know, can you just give an example for the public so that they kind of understand what we're talking about when we say minimal cost?
I want to say the repair bucket for a small is 20 to $30 plus a little labor.
Okay. No, 20 to $30. So this is to do a um, like a patch. This is not to replace a sidewalk panel, to re-level it, to restore it to like an addition, uh, uh, an original install condition. This is to ensure that the safety hazard is no longer there.
If you look at all the sidewalks we've repaired up and down the streets thus far, I think we have 600 and change, maybe $700 material at the most.
Uh, we have some cases of uh, tree root damage. And some, those are pretty. I'm just wondering, um, how does prevailing wage play into this? If, if I want to do it myself and maybe it's gonna cost $500 and prevailing wage work ends up being $1,000 and 60 days doesn't seem a long time to me.
Since you own a sidewalk, you don't have to pay prevailing wage. We only have prevailing wage when the city owns something.
Okay.
So it's up to you to fix it or how you.
So the city would do the work, but not at prevailing wage scale?
If the city had to come in and do it somewhere, there was a master fee schedule, what it costs for employees to come out. It's about what we pay them plus a little, to cover their full, full burden.
I mean, I'm not sure what the difference really would be. It depends on the size of the job, I think.
Yeah, if you're doing prevailing wage, if, when the city does a job, we bring in a contractor, they provide, they uh, we pay them prevailing wage to do that.
When the city does it, right?
When, when we have a city project, but again.
So then the owner becomes responsible for a prevailing wage job rather than.
The owner is not responsible for prevailing wage job because they own the sidewalk.
And a clarification, the city would only be doing the repair if that 60 days has gone by and the owner hasn't been able to do it. Then the city has the option to come in and do the repair and then um, then that would be prevailing.
And we're gonna be highly flexible with people to get their sidewalks repaired. It's just, they, they need to be done and of course, nobody can just make things happen overnight, so we understand that. But right now we just draw attention to it and show them the options of how we fix the ones in town that were the city's responsibility and see where it goes from there. But we're not, we're not requiring anybody to hire a contractor and tear out full panels and big links to sidewalks and we do them. We just want to have the tripping hazards addressed.
So just to make sure then if the city does the job and there's a cost to it and it's the owner's responsibility, doesn't money change hands after that or? I mean, that's what I think I.
If the owner does it themselves, they get to do it at whatever market rate they can attain. And if the city has to do it for them, they will pay prevailing wage essentially because that's the only way the city is able to contract the work or do the work.
That's, that's what I'm concerned about and maybe it's not a concern.
If we contracted the workout, didn't do it in-house. Well, and the city's only gonna do it if the homeowner is not taking action. If the owners, homeowners reached out to the city and they're in the process, then the city's not gonna go do it. But it's only if the homeowner is not, is refusing to do it or not reaching out whatsoever. Or maybe. Well, but then they would reach out to the city and they would work and see what needs to be done.
And like I said, there's a provision for an appeal which could come to the city and you guys could waive it if there was a hardship or.
So to clarify for the public, is there a um, good faith efforts uh, extension in the ordinance? Because an ordinance is only as good as it's written because while our current administration may be of the right mind to be flexible and understand the community, that doesn't mean future administrations will be. So I just want to understand, you know, in, in the course of implementation, you know, are we looking at um, you know, somebody being able to point to the code and say, well, I showed you that I got three bids and I've been taking these actions. Am I able to um, you know, get an extension as a direct result of me showing my good faith efforts to complete this?
So the way the ordinance is drafted right now, there isn't a paragraph on extensions. We had looked at other ordinances, other jurisdictions and they had recommended uh, 60 days um, for that, but I guess we could be open to, to looking at that.
I think it would be a good idea, just, you know, considering the demographic. And then, you know, I think, yeah, I think that showing the good faith efforts, I think justifies an extension as applicable just so that again, we, we have rules that reflect implementation, not necessarily relying on sentiment or goodwill.
Well, I walk this town as much as anybody and I know of at least a couple of cases where older people have sidewalks that are significant repair, not just polishing up or patching or anything like that. There's some that are very damaged on some of the older homes. I'm just thinking about them. But if we, do we have to write into the ordinance that we'll work with people or do we just have it in? Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause otherwise you don't know.
We certainly can look at writing that into the ordinance. And then I've walked all four and a half miles of sidewalks in the cities and made a list of where they need to be repaired.
Okay.
I'd really like to see a 90 day timeframe on this. And uh, a definition of what, basically a section that points to the state codes and laws that say how the sidewalk needs to be ADA compliant, like just listing the sections, you don't have to write them out or anything.
I think the ordinance does have that.
Does it? Did I miss it?
I may be mistaken.
I didn't see it in the definitions.
Okay.
Or uh, may purpose of this chapter?
If not, I.
Okay.
I mean, even if we don't, that doesn't mean that it doesn't happen up above, right, at the state level?
The last definition or purpose of this chapter?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, actually standards of repair might be uh, requirements for repair.
Yeah. Yeah. Thanks. Or building code or whatever. And what about situations where houses are on corners and the corner is what needs to be repaired? That's gonna bring in ADA compliance and significant cost.
Yeah, good for.
So I think we need to look at something excluding corners possibly because that's gonna be extremely difficult for a homeowner to take on.
Hundred percent. And again, we're not asking to tear the whole sidewalk out, which would um, bring that ADA compliance into, we're just asking to fix the tripping hazards.
For now.
For now.
But what, you know, looking to how this could be implemented, depending on the severity or the nature of the damage that may occur in the future, it might not be optional. So I think that's a good idea, maybe that we um, exclude it from here, saying that that will be um, something that will be dealt with on an individual basis um, so that we can deal with it separately, maybe it's a.
Yeah, if ADA compliance is involved even just then we'll look at it on case by case basis.
Absolutely.
Cause that's a significant cost over just patching a, a whole sidewalk or whatever, re-leveling it.
Yeah, so the spirit behind us is we just want to try to get the tripping hazards taken care of, but yes.
We want to make sure that it stays to that. Instead of expanding to, uh, this sidewalk's cracked, you have to replace this section.
Absolutely, hundred percent, hundred percent.
Is it reasonable to do an assessment and take a look at the town the way it is and determine how many sidewalks we're talking about that really need a lot of work?
Yeah, again, I've already done the assessment and I have a list of what sidewalks need to work and they're all very minimal.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're just little lifts like this that you catch your toe in and somebody might trip and fall.
We need to go for a walk together. I don't know if I can keep up with you.
So I do have one other thing on the uh, payment to make repairs. On this one, I just want to clarify, you know, we do say that um, 30 days after receipt that they're gonna make the payments, otherwise we can lien the property. But um, I would like to put another paragraph provision in there that there can be an option to request a payment plan. And then I'd like to explore whether or not they can um, potentially opt to have it included on the tax rolls voluntarily. Is that something we can look into? Cause then they can potentially have it come from their taxes without putting a lien on their property, which is a very big distinct difference. So we'd get the same result, but without the consequence to the homeowner.
Oh, I think I have my couple of points.
And if you want an example of our mindset, just look out in front of City Hall where we did a repair there.
Yeah.
That's, that's how easy the repair is and that was uh, three quarters of an inch that we just ramped and smoothed right out.
Exactly. And then they have to stand up in front of the public and say that they're being mean.
Yeah. My only comment is it's amazing this hasn't come up before in the city council. All the decades that have been coming to meetings, it's, it's uh, thank you, city manager, for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, absolutely. And a lot of things goes to Kathy and Carl as well. Yeah, we were all a little surprised there was nothing in there.
And now it's time for the public.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I, as a property owner, I've had for, I don't know, about 35 years. I always thought the city was, was on the, on the sidewalks. And I did, I, I couldn't hear you very clearly. Is that what you said originally after all this?
No, the, the property owner is on the sidewalks in front of their property.
Yeah.
And now if there is a city tree in the uh, gross dripping between, something we planted and it's wrecking a sidewalk, then it's on the city to repair. That's why you see us repairing all the sidewalks up and down this area here where the trees.
Anyway, as a property owner, I'm not really in favor of this. I just have to tell you.
Any other public comment?
Good evening, Perry Anderson. Did I not see that in that presentation? It said that this was on the books since 1935? Well, what the hell has Colfax been doing for 70 some years?
We actually haven't forced this before.
Sidewalks, I mean, they're bigger than the continental divide on some of those separations. If you just drive around and look at them. And so now as a property owner, all of a sudden, these people are gonna find out that, oh, by the way, you own the sidewalk? That's in $20? To fix something? I'm with you. It's thousands. I mean, the hourly rate's $150 an hour if you halfway know what you're doing. So plus material. Well, I tell you what. You're gonna have some excited people. You think flushing the turd is an expensive deal. You give them the sidewalk thing, they're gonna go nuts. But it needs to be done. I mean, some of those things are like this. The skateboard guys like them, but that's about it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none, any more further comment from the council?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, we actually have enforced this on the, in the past on property owners and made them repair the sidewalks where applicable. The unfortunate part though is because we didn't have an ordinance in place outlining what the protocol was for that. It allowed for improper repairs. It allowed for um, you know, there to be ambiguity about what would happen if the repairs didn't get done. And one of the things that creating this ordinance does is it, it actually puts limitations on us on what we're able to do as far as forcing people to do it and how they would pay for it. So while this looks like a new rule that would essentially force people to do things technically at a state level, they have the authority to implement that and have since 1935 to where it's been a rule here since then. Um, it's just a matter of having accountability over what the process looks like and making sure that there is actually a system in place so that if a property owner feels that they're not being treated fairly or that um, they have, you know, a reason to protest, they now have a way to go about that to make sure that, you know, again, we're, we're not just loosey goosey trying to force people to do things and throwing liens on properties because technically that currently is something we have the right to do today. But we just want to make sure when we publish this, that we're not publishing something that doesn't um, really meet the intent of what we're trying to do here. And we want to make sure it's very clear that, you know, again, there are certain expectations and, and understandings we have about our demographic and the needs of the community. And we want to make sure that there's a process understood on how to meet those needs.
Kathy.
I think what I'm hearing is that you want us to go back and take another crack and um, and update this with what we've heard. So I think we'd go ahead and do that and bring it back in January.
I, I have one more thing too. We have homes in this town that predate 1935. What about them? You know, who, do they, did, did that state law make them owners of their sidewalk? And they probably had no idea that it even happened? Probably, huh?
I have no idea. That's a good question.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if I know the state, you got grandfathered in.
Yeah, what, what the statute does is it makes you liable for the sidewalk. So whether, whether or not you want. So yes, it was a change of the law.
I have one more thing I would like to add. We have a few sidewalks to nowhere in this town that will never become a walkable path for anybody. And I'd like to include a provision for retiring dead end sidewalks as well so that if we determine that that sidewalk exists, it's a safety hazard, it has no reason to exist, that um, there will be a future, we don't need to write it all in here, but just note, notating that there will be a um, separate process to address those types of situations. So if we need to retire a section of sidewalk that doesn't belong, it's up on a hillside, we don't even know why it's there, we can just get rid of it. I know uh, on the upper portion of Pleasant Street, there's a few of those that, who knows what they were thinking when they put them in, but they don't need to be there. Probably. Yeah.
I'm thinking of the one that's right on Main Street. And there's the wall with the shadow art and the homes are way up there. Who owns those sidewalks, I wonder?
Kansas sidewalk.
Above, but there's. Above, but there's one down below. That may, might be a candidate for retirement, but I don't know. I, people like to go look at that art. And I'm on that wall. I want to stay there.
I, I didn't, I didn't say my name before Connie Heileman, and I have the property on West Church Street, a hundred feet. And it's my property I own is only twenty-five by, by a hundred. And the property, the sidewalk I was always told was owned by the city because that is not on my property. So you've got another situation like that. It might be that way at those ones, that ones up the hill that the property line maybe doesn't even go to the sidewalk or just to the side.
And that's a really great distinction. I'm glad you brought that up because to clarify, it's not that the property owner owns the land under which the sidewalk resides. It's that the property adjacent is married to it and liable for it. So while your property may not overlap with the sidewalk itself, state law requires that the adjacent APN is liable for that sidewalk.
But thank you for clarifying that. I didn't realize that. I'm still against it.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Any other comment from council?
Yeah. Do you mind? Because we did throw a lot at you guys. Do you mind if we just have staff walk through what we threw at you to make sure we did capture it all?
Be me on the hot seat, make sure I took good notes. Okay, so you want clarifications on standards of repair. We want language about good faith effort justifying and extensions, so looking at extensions. Prefer a ninety day timeframe for doing the repairs. You mentioned a separate process for these sidewalks to, that go to nowhere. Let's see. Language on individual case by case basis, looking at, I assume flexibility. And then options for financing to request payment and whether they want to do tax roll voluntarily. Did I catch it all?
I, I think there was a comment about responsibility for corners as well.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah. So we want to make sure that that's referred to as something that will be separately addressed. I think that when we talked about that flexibility, that's exactly what we were talking about was that that will have to be addressed by a separate process, just like the dead end sidewalks to nowhere.
Yep. Good question.
Actually, hon- honestly, I found how to repair them on a YouTube video with the material they're using.
Thank you.
I don't think we're going to motion. I think the, you have enough council direction to take it back and we'll bring this back at a future meeting.
The next public hearing is on the annual report of mitigation impact fees. Shanna, would you take the podium?
Can I do it from here instead?
Sure.
Awesome. Good evening, council. Shanna Stoll, Administrative Services Officer. Tonight, we have the review of the annual mitigation impact fee report. In accordance with the mitigation fee act and Colfax municipal code, we are required to complete an annual AB sixteen hundred mitigation report and council must review the report and a noticed public hearing. At close of the public hearing, council must determine if mitigation impact fees continue to be reasonably related to impacted development and whether they describe facilities and projects still needed. The city maintains separate accounts for each fee type. We have nine established funds. The report outlines all activity for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. The amounts collected were minimal last year with the majority coming from interest earnings through our LEAF account. The report also outlines the expenses, which were a city match to the CDBG road rehab project, a new shade cover for the park and the metal building at the city's corporation. It's my review. And here is a listing of what the current fees are. Discuss. Are you guys able to find a bigger version in your packet or should I go print some out real quick? Sorry, I didn't realize the PowerPoint was so tiny. Okay. Essentially, the categories are roads, drainage, rails, parks and rec, city buildings, city vehicles, downtown parking. See, a fire mitigation fee paid out of a one percent construction tax.
Comments from the public? Does council have any comments? Questions? None? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion? They did, yeah. They were silent.
Open the public hearing and then.
I thought we had public hearing, but we'll do it again. Public, any comments? Hearing none. Council, any comments, questions? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstained.
Oh, aye, aye, that's well.
Motion carries. Public comment. Item six, this is time for the public to make any comment on something that's not on the agenda. Any?
I couldn't let the last meeting, is this, this the last meeting of the year, isn't it? Okay, yeah, no, we, we have to leave on a positive note. It said that we judge ourselves by our intentions. And we judge others by their actions. With that being said, we're winding up another tumultuous year in all respects, personal, politics, religion, you name it. It's been a crazy, crazy year. But I think people are looking to be a little more optimistic next year. There's a lot to reflect on, focusing on the positive locally. Roads have been paved that I didn't think I'd live long enough to see, and I've been here thirty-seven years. That's fantastic. And there's been so many positive changes. The people that we have now in council, that work the behind the scenes, that do all the paperwork and make things happen. I believe everybody has their heart in the right place. I really do. And sometimes I don't think people get the recognition for that. I think they get more of the, my order was wrong. I didn't get the french fries right and they kind of crabbed like hell about it, but that's just kind of human nature. So, one of the things that I just experienced the other night, I, I'd never been there and, and Sharon Connors would probably get a kick out of it because she always asked me, you've never been to this, you've never been to that. No, I didn't know. I didn't know it existed. Had the good fortune to be invited to Loomis to the High Hand Nursery Dinner thing. And my father-in-law, he's friends with a lot of people down there that own businesses. So I got the tour, the whole thing. I was floored. I couldn't believe how many people were in that thing and what was going on there. And I mean, the level of everything, the restaurant we went to, I mean, the service was unbelievable. The prices were up there, but the service was fantastic. And I'm looking at this and I'm going, okay, well, people could argue, well, that, you know, that's Loomis, you know, da, 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 da. Well, they got Roseville and Rockland as competitors. And they're doing just fine, all three of them. And Lincoln. So maybe some of whatever they're doing might be something that we might want to try to investigate and find out. I know I'm curious, I'm going to find out. How do they make this thing work? Because they're packed. And they're not giving stuff away. The prices, I mean, you know, twenty-eight dollars for a salad is like, whoa, but everybody's in line wanting to pay. So hopefully with the efforts that we're all trying to do for twenty-five, maybe we can make a dent in this thing. And actually get people wanting to come and see us instead of the, the thing that I hear at Ed Marston's Celebration of Life. This one couple said, yeah, when I tell people where I live, they go, oh, you mean that little weird town? We, we don't want to be that. We want to be that little great town. You know, that's why the T-shirt, by the way. So anyway, um, thank you all for all your hard efforts and time. And I know you put a lot of effort into this stuff and always don't get the appreciation you deserve. And I just felt like that should be something that was said publicly. So. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment for the end of the year? Going once, going twice. Public comment is over. Now we move to staff reports. Sean, would you like to start? Council reports, rather.
I don't have anything to report tonight. It's been a slow month, a lot of canceled meetings. Around the holidays. Tomorrow night, we're having our Fire Safe Council meeting right here at City Hall at six o'clock. That's it.
Mary. Only that I referred the Blasor County Economic Development Commission to our theater. Just for a conference and discussions on how, how they can make their business better and what are they trying to do? And that meeting will probably happen sometime in the new year. And I believe that's a really important place for Colfax because it's a destination. It's the kind of place that people come to go to a movie and spill over into whatever else might interest them. So very important to get that place going again. So we'll see what comes out of that. And that's all. Okay, Caroline.
On official meetings, we had this SECOG policy and innovations, what, two weeks ago that I went down there for Sacramento? And it's very interesting listening to their, what is the word I want? Those people that pay attention to what's going on in DC and.
Oh, the lobbyists.
The lobbyists, thank you. My brain is not functioning today. Yeah. Yes, there you go. So the, the two different groups we have that pay attention in both state and fed and them trying to guess what's about to happen in the next year as everybody's transitioning over. It was an interesting conversation. Um, other than that, while I think our committee meetings have been relatively quiet, the community has not been quiet whatsoever. There has been so many things that have gone on that I know a bunch of attended. So I just want to give shout outs to the Lions who've done, you know, they did the Thanksgiving dinner, they did a craft day. We have the gingerbread contest that's going on as well that CareSphere is hosting. The Bunko Babes did their Christmas shopping and with everybody's donations, they actually shot for ninety-two kids in our community this year. So we've got to do that.
Trinity.
Um, I really don't have much to report out tonight either. Also went to SECOG probably about three weeks ago. That meeting was relatively smooth. Not a whole lot to go over. I mean, we did talk a bit about the diversity, equity, inclusion working group that they have. There was a comment from Supervisor Frost about, you know, trying to get everybody united in some common, common ground about constitutional education. I did make a comment on that, that, you know, that's definitely something that we all want to be united on. But one other thing that would probably be really helpful for us to focus on in government is the fact that not a lot of folks really understand how a lot of things work. There's sort of this, I'm going to use the word ignorance, but that's not really the word I want to use because it implies that the person who doesn't know is responsible. And that's really not the case. Um, I do think that as a community, especially a small one like Colfax, but in general, all communities, I think that individuals have a responsibility to be involved civically. And I think we've kind of moved away from that where there's the separation from the average citizen and their government, even at a local level that shouldn't exist. And part of what happens when you have that separation and that expectation that there's a difference between the people up here and the people on the side is unfortunately the dissemination of information and then the knowledge about the functioning of the government, you know, at this level tends to be lost. And I think it's really prohibitive towards, you know, allowing the right projects to get done or even helping the people we really want to help because, and I used as an example, you know, when I, when I was a kid coming out of foster care, you know, I spent my time homeless. I spent my time trying to figure out how the system worked, you know, they kind of just drop you on your head. And it would have been really nice if one of the things that we had as a focus was just showing people, you know, the way things work and the tools that are out there and how to help yourself. And I think sometimes we focus on helping people instead of teaching people how to help themselves. Um, and if we're able to show people how things work, how they can get involved, how they can be an active participating member that helps others. Sometimes looking at it through the lens of helping other people helps people help themselves too. So, um, all that to say, you know, I think that we brought some alternative perspective to the table that was duly noted and, that's about that. That's all I have for committee reports.
Okay, thank you. I went to just one meeting a couple of weeks ago, it was in Auburn at the Elks Club where the Blasor Independent Resource Services gave a lecture. And they have a lot of services that are free to anybody over sixty. If you need a, a ramp built to your house because you have mobility problems, they will build it free. If you need a, a bar in your bathroom for the shower or toilet, they'll put one in free. And so I've got brochures up here. And you should call them. They cover a lot of, a lot of things. And their goal is to try to keep people from being forced to go into extended care to keep them at home. So definitely it's worth calling and it's a free service. So I've got brochures here for anybody to pick up or give to a friend. I don't think you can use one, Connor, but.
Not quite there yet.
Speaking of people that are really good at pushing resources out for, who had the king over here. You're really good at that, Ken.
Thank you.
It's a compliment to you, I think.
Oh, thank you.
Every meeting, you've got some resource that people should know about and you're like, hey, guys.
Well, we got.
Tell your friends.
We have to let people know we exist. We.
Exactly.
City manager?
Uh, nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else? Shanna? Okay, next. What's next, city attorney?
Hey, billboard photography contest.
So Erin, if you go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay.
Your nonprofit.
Yes. Hi, my name is Erin Newington. I'm super excited to represent the historic Colfax Downtown Association tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity from the city and the city council to introduce this new organization and how we feel, how we feel we can help Colfax be a, a important destination for someone looking to visit the Sierra foothills. And Harry actually set this up beautifully for me. So, uh, this organization was born out of being. Um, so, uh, this organization was born out of being in multiple rooms, um, listening to, uh, community leaders, business owners, building owners, residents, um, and one thing that everybody has in common is they have a passion for Colfax. Um, one thing that we noticed that was a gap was there wasn't an actual playbook or models and systems that we could execute, um, from a, um, non-government perspective, um, uh, in order to make a difference. And so I took that and ran with it, um, and did a lot of research. And so, um, what I found was forming a downtown association was imperative, um, to, uh, helping, uh, a historic downtown area, um, revitalize itself. And so I did a lot of research, um, um, on, uh, downtown associations and what they could contribute, uh, to the area. But I wanted to first go over like, what is a downtown association and what are they responsible for? So a downtown association is, targets a specific area within the city, um, that, uh, needs help. Um, a lot of you have been residents of Colfax forever and you've seen the evolution of our city. Um, but we are in a little bit of a lull right now when it comes to our, our downtown and getting enough, um, activity and, and, um, people down off the freeway past Starbucks and into our historic downtown. Um, so this association is dedicated to that cohesive mission of how do we, um, not only get our residents down to the downtown association or the down Main Street area, but how do we pull people off the freeway and let them know that this is actually, um, a historic town that they can enjoy, um, and bring their tourism dollars to. So in this research, I went across the country and I started looking at what you said was how do we do that? Like, how specifically can the community engage in this process? And so I went and I started researching other cities across the, the country. And I was looking for cities that had historic downtowns. They had smaller populations because we don't have enough, you know, tax dollars to do a lot of these projects. And so how did, were they able to accomplish their missions? All of these towns, there's many, many more than this, um, that I've researched, but here's four examples. Um, all of them have, like I said, a small historic downtown with a low population. All of them had some kind of an economic challenge. So there was a major employer that had closed. There were, um, historic buildings that were dilapidated and need a repair. Um, there were various economic challenges that each city had. And so I was looking at, okay, well, if we have a lull right now in historic Colfax, what specific tactics can we utilize that are already proven models across the country that these, um, particular cities are working? That we can execute, uh, to make a difference because we all have the passion to see the difference happen. Um, and we're all helping in our own way. But how can this organization bring together other organizations, um, on and, and execute that cohesive plan, uh, based on these proven models and systems? So who do we partner with as an association? We partner with the city of Colfax, the city council, local schools, Placer County, um, Chamber of Commerce, uh, local nonprofits, business owners and residents and building owners. So how do we get these, all these groups together, running these successful plays that other cities across the country have already proven work? So what the common goal is, and it's actually, there we go. What the common goal is across all these cities and the plays that they're, they're running, it comes down to four goals that they're, they're creating for their town. They have a design goal, um, which is things like, um, visually, um, improving the downtown area. So bringing in sites that people can gather, um, hang out, bring their family, um, bring pub, uh, public art installations to town. How do we improve, um, like the directional signage specifically to get people off the freeway? And there's so many people that I have spoke with that actually live in Colfax. I have no idea. We have an historic downtown, which blows my mind. And so it's not only engaging visitors and tourism, but it really is, how do we become the hub? How do we stop letting residents, not letting, a lot of residents are taking their money outside of our city and spending it. So as you were saying, how do we keep them in town? How do we keep them engaged? And how do we keep them from taking their money to other cities? So these four goals, um, are universal across many cities that are running these same plays. Um, and so it's not only just making the city look good, it's getting the community involved. Because I can sit up here and tell you the 10 things that I want to see executed. But if half the town doesn't care, we're not going to get anywhere. So it really is about figuring out, bringing all the groups together, the nonprofits, the residents, the business owners, and figure out what's important to them and then run those plays with these models. And so, um, we also have an economic goal. How do we drive, um, growth to the area? How, we have a lot of vacant buildings. How do we specifically attract, um, businesses to the area by creating this vibe and this energy that they want to be a part of? Let's see, because a lot of people, I would say, there's half the people that I've spoke with that identify Colfax as a poor town. And I don't see Colfax as a poor town. We have a lot of money that has moved into our area. A lot of people, like I said, are taking that money and reinvesting it in other cities. And I just really think that we have a lot to work with to get those restaurants filled, um, if we use the right models. Um, we also have a promotional goal. So how do we create signature events, much like Winterfest that, that the chamber is executing? Um, that gets people and gets people to recognize our city for that signature event? How can we take signature events and highlight the businesses that are within this downtown district to give them, um, their own brand or, or more awareness to what they're doing and trying to accomplish? Um, and how do we not only serve our residents by giving them great events, but again, attract tourism dollars to our area by doing these signature events? Okay. So how can you help? Well, it is definitely a group effort. And so, um, I would suggest, um, if you have any kind of resources, you can make a connection for us. You have a building we can use to host events. You have a business that needs promoted. Um, uh, you have money to donate. You want to join a committee. You want to be part of the board, whatever it looks like, we need your help. So that comes down to, um, who we partner with. And one of the first people we partnered with is the city of Colfax. And we're super grateful to be a part of the first, uh, Colfax Billboard Contest. And, um, led by the city council. And, uh, uh, we were able to host that on our website and our social media profiles and we're super grateful for that opportunity. We had so much engagement from the public. It was awesome to see great pictures flowing through with the love of our, our community. And it was really cool to see everybody get engaged and voting, um, on these particular, um, the, the winners and, and it's just the community involvement. And that's really what the core of this organization is, is how do we get the community, um, engaged and on board with a cohesive plan? So, uh, with that said, we picked the two top pictures, uh, based on the votes. Um, they're gorgeous pictures of our downtown. And the winner is going to be presented on our digital billboard there on 80. Um, and it's a really great way. Think of all the traffic that goes on, on, up and down the freeway, up the hill, down the hill. And how can we let them know we have this gorgeous historic downtown for them to come visit? And I think both of these pictures reflect that beautifully. So, uh, although the public voted and we selected the top two from, um, the group, uh, the city council is the one who makes the final call. And before we announce who that winner is, I would just like to redirect anybody who might be interested in the downtown association cause, you want to get involved, whatever that looks like. I would love to hear, um, any ideas that you might have. We also built an interactive website at visithistoriccolfax.com. Um, it has an interactive map of Colfax, um, all the businesses. It has the light tour on there. It has a historic building tour that tells the story of all the historic buildings in our area, um, and where they're located on a map. We have all the upcoming events for all the organizational, uh, organizations locally. Um, we have local restaurants and cafes for those who, uh, listings, for those who are interested in tourism and visiting our area. And you have the ability to sign up and get involved. So would love for you to either tap me on the shoulder after this meeting or go to the website and fill out the form. Um, would absolutely love to get your input and your involvement.
So tell me, your day job career.
What's that?
What is your day job career?
Well, I'm a real estate agent by day.
Okay, okay, that checks out. This is very professional marketing and I love it.
I have a marketing background even before that, so I, I love this kind of stuff.
Knew it, knew it. No, this is beautiful. I love the website design. These pictures are gorgeous. This is, this is fantastic. And I'm so happy to see the leadership involved on the, uh, community side for something like this. Because I think on, a lot of times it's not realized the limitations you have as government and, and then true need to have that joining of the public and then the government side working together. So thank you so much for all the work you put in on this.
Thank you. And I also feel like people have the energy and the desire to help, but they don't know how to plug in and help. And so if we can lay that framework for them by creating some, a strategic plan for year one on exactly what we're going to focus on, I think it'll help get everybody on board.
I love it.
I want to give you so many commend, commendations because that website you built is phenomenal. I have greatly enjoyed being on it and you have found so many hidden things that are already created that people may not know where we're there. And you have pulled them all together, which is what we need, everything in one spot. And so you've done such a great job on it. The votes on your, your social media, the, what were the counts?
Ma'am, okay, let's see. The first picture got 36 votes and the second picture got 67 votes.
Yeah. And I think we had nine in total that they were voting from, right? It was, it was eight or nine pictures.
We got a ton of submissions, nine that qualified based on the rules. So yeah, that's what we voted off of or just, uh, ran the contest on the nine. But, um, as you mentioned before, that, uh, this might be a really great thing to redo. Um, and so we can constantly refresh that billboard. Um, I think that's huge real estate for us to tell our story. Um, and if we don't tell our story, someone else will. And so we're not that little weird town. We're not. We're a historic Main Street that is, uh, a, a absolute place for you to visit when you come to the Sierra Foothills.
So what type of entity is it? Is it a?
It's a nonprofit.
Is it a nonprofit corporation?
We started the filing with the city, um, and we're in the process of getting the EIN number now.
So 501(c)(3) then? Is it a member type organization or?
Right now we're focusing on grants. How can we tell Colfax's story? Um, so that we can generate grant money to, to, because the thing is, a lot of these grants that I've researched based on being in some of these rooms is you have to tell the story and you have to see why, why we deserve the money. And if we're not, and that's part of why the website was built, is how do we tell our story and show the need? And the biggest thing that I personally think that we have going for us is we have such a historic town and it's such a small population. And we, when I evaluate as a real estate agent, all these other areas around us that works the upside and the potential, Colfax is number one on the list. It really is. We have so much to go, uh, going for us. And it won't turn, take much to turn that on. It's not like we're way out in the middle of nowhere trying to generate interest. It goes right by us every day. And how do we pull them? What are the plays that is going to take to pull them off the freeway?
I know I am among the uninformed here. I'm just wondering, um, what, what is the website?
Visit, uh, historiccolfax.com. It's on your, it's on your.
Oh, that, okay, that is the name of it? And it has a website, right? I mean, this is, this is really exciting to me because I've been believing and proposing and telling everybody that'll even listen to me is, is an image like that needs to be right in the center of that roundabout instead of a sign that says Colfax. You know, I don't care what we spent on that. I think the best it does is tells people maybe that they're in Colfax already when they really aren't.
Right.
And something like this in the roundabout, something that actually showed all the businesses equally, um, the ones on North Main Street. And I would also go out to each of the building owners and the business owners ahead of time and say, hey, this is going to be a sign that directs people downtown. Is there anything you'd like to do to your building? This is a good time.
And we were frankly inspired by a lot of the meetings that you facilitated around this conversation. Um, and that has helped spur, uh, looking into it further and how we could, um, create a cohesive plan around that. Um, so, uh, thank you.
Yeah, we, the town has a lot to offer.
We really do.
And even outside the town, Rollins Lake and the Bear River and the North Fork and on and on and on. There's so much to offer here.
There really is.
Yeah, this, this really excites me. I'm, I'm all in.
I know. I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that.
All in.
We have to get to pick the, the final picture that goes on there. So, yeah.
Do we have any public comment?
Possible. Do you, do you have more than two pictures, Frank? What if we had a program where, what I learned in advertising is after a short amount of time, people's attention span is thirty, right? So what if we just took all those pictures on a rotation page?
Yeah, we, we definitely have plans for utilizing those pictures, um, in a way to promote our city. Whether it makes it to the billboard or not, I don't know, but, um.
Thank you. The shots, we hope that kept changing. Being that it's on the freeway. And then it kind of gets everybody involved. If they found that we dispelled one word in the banner, imagine the commentary that there would be where all of a sudden, everybody's seen it there. They feel part of it now. Who submitted that picture?
Yeah. And I think that's super important. And I also think just from the billboard perspective of exit now for historic Main Street, some, some call to action. And the picture is wonderful, but a call to action that lets them know what they're, we're more than the Starbucks. And we need to let the people know that.
Well, and, and to go along with that, I think the intention is that this contest will get run once a quarter or, you know, every three to four months. And so that picture will change very regularly for people to see that.
About forty-five days.
But the biggest thing is get people, people will engage more in a, in an idea or a cohesive plan if they're involved with that. And not just somebody saying, hey, that's going up on the sign. Like, how do we continue to have those meetings and get the buy-in? Um, so that when we go find the grant money to pay for some of the stuff, which is part of our mission, it's a big part of our mission, that people, it's not pushed on them, they've decided.
Well, and in the shorter term, remembering that the majority of traffic that we are going to have that goes off 80 and sees that billboard, uh, the vast majority of those people are not locals. And so a lot of that traffic, this is going to be fresh for them, no matter how long it's been up. But I like the forty-five days. I like that concept, you know, of let's keep looking. But in particular, um, I love that it incorporates a bold text that you're able to see. And then it includes the downtown strip. I like that because it brings instant awareness without too much wordiness, um, making it very clear, like, I don't remember seeing those buildings.
Yep.
I'm going to go find those buildings. That's what will go through people's minds. Um, and I, I will just comment, um, between the two pictures, the bottom one really stands out for me big time, um, as being the favorable one because there's no interruption of the text. It's very easy to read. Um, and it's, it's very favorable, the, the lighting. Um, and you do get a really nice clean shot of the building, um, without seeing the, the vehicles or any of the other, uh, noisy interruptions in the photo. So, um, they're both excellent photos, but I definitely lean strongly to the bottom photo.
And in one of the struggles with the billboard is you can't decide which side it's going to be on. So, uh, how do you design a piece that matches both? And so I think one of the things that I put down in my notes is we really need to have signage coming back from Canyon, whatever, to back to the downtown. Even though like we know how to get there, if they see that sign and it's too late, we need them to be able to be redirected.
And Caroline's point, asking me at one time about those, the candy cane bowl signs. We came back with a, a number. Yeah, if we, if we wrap them new, which that's good for like maybe five years, a hundred and fifty a sign. If we put a new, if we do a new tin with all brand new from day one, two hundred.
Okay, our, our mission is to find the money. It's already on the list, so I'm glad to hear the price is cheap.
Yeah.
Let, let's stay together on it though. Let's not just start shooting from the hip here and trying this and trying that. Let's, let's make sure we're.
Community meetings and I, I do not, the intention of this organization is not to make the unilateral decisions on what Colfax is going to be. Like, we have to get the community involved. Whether they show up or not, I'm going to rely on everybody in this room to help me fill those rooms. And we're going to put the promotion out as much as we can. But I also agree, just making decisions and moving forward puts us all going in separate directions and we need to work the plan.
And we can build a downtown of dreams like that baseball. And we can build a downtown of dreams like that baseball field, you know? If you build it, they will come. And I also like that second image. And I, one of the very few things I know about photography, maybe the only thing, is that our eye tends to start at the lower left and rotate up and to the right. And that's the attraction, I think, on that, that second one. Just that's the way the eyes flow and it looks.
You know, thinking about people driving, some cases, hundred years speed, eighty miles an hour, eighty. Or more, you know, you gotta think, we want people to actually see it and pay attention to it. We want to have a very clear image, not too much noise in the photo. We want to make sure that it's legible and readable and, you know, it sends a message with only three seconds to the fact.
Yeah, and these are both very distinctive pictures that would catch attention versus some of the other pictures that are up there are pretty like, so, so sorry, who's doing that? But it seems a little generic and it, it's not telling our story the way it could.
Did you notice that brands is not everything we do? That's, we're trying to be like cowards.
I also like the second one mainly because it includes a little bit of South Main and where South Main is always very neglected. It does include that. I have to comment that that corner building is beautiful lit up the way it is right now. It looks gorgeous. At night, anyway.
Comment. We go back to council comment.
I vote for the bottom image.
I vote for the bottom.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstain.
Am I allowed to mention who did the vote?
Motion carries.
Uh, the photographer is a local resident, Grayson Sharp. So thank you, Grayson.
Okay, we move on to item eight B, city procurement, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During a September eleventh city council meeting, we had a discussion about raising the city manager's purchase or sign off authority. And at that point, our attorney had brought up the fact that it should not be in my city manager's contract, but it should be involved in our purchase authority, our purchasing, purchasing program. So I brought up, we, I called a bunch of the other cities around, find out what everybody else was allowing your city manager to spend in, you know, Loomis and Auburn and you're talking forty, fifty plus thousand dollars. And I looked at what like sewer pumps cost and that kind of thing. And I just kind of rounded it down to twenty five because that seemed like a more comfortable number. Well, that's how I got to the twenty five. So I'll answer any questions happily.
So I'm actually going to ask the council that we continue this item because we have a closed session item that is directly related and I'd like to do the closed session item first. Just because as you mentioned, the contract, I'd like to actually go over the item first and then push this to the next meeting if council's okay with that.
It's okay with that. Okay, in that case, we will move on to item HC, Sierra Vista Sewer Lateral Certification. City manager. Sierra Vista request.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're representing Sierra Vista Center and we, we, I, I, I'm, thank you for your recommendation for getting that approved because we, because our heater, we did have to do that heater replacement and it has nothing to do with the sewer situation. And it, the cost of the heater and all the materials was only sixteen thousand. The rest was for, for labor and for, for the permit. So thank you for, I hope you will consider doing that for us.
So unless the, you see where the Muni code triggers, if you get about twenty thousand dollars in materials and labor, there's a requirement to video inspect your sewer lateral. And the community center clearly is a nonprofit, probably has a harder time raising cash as the city does for extra things. So I brought this before asking the city if they want to consider waiving the permit fee or maybe even waiving a permit fee and the video inspection. It's, it's up to you.
I, I would recommend that we, we actually do it and waive the fee.
Well, we wouldn't do the video inspection. That would be up to the community center to hire somebody to do the, the video inspection.
So, okay, we don't do that. I didn't understand that part. I.
Were there any issues identified in I and I project in that area that weren't fixed or any additional inflows that we noticed from that area? Perfect. No problem.
I hate to be a party pooper. So there actually is a little bit of a problem I see when actually looking at the code. We do not have any kind of a hardship exception of any kind within our current ordinance. We don't have any lateral authority granted for us to be able to consider a waiver of the actual inspection, only of the repairs. So my recommendation would be that we actually modify the ordinance to include the provision for us to be able to waive that so that we can equitably treat other nonprofits and entities because we actually have had more than one person come in who's spent twenty thousand dollars on necessary repairs to their home and they've been forced to go through this. And so for us to, you know, have an issue where we're not treating people equitably, I, I think it's really, really important we update the code accordingly and, and capture that before we do this. Otherwise, I think there's a really reasonable argument there that we're not following our own ordinances and, you know, the others should be, you know, owe to refund, et cetera. So.
Well, I think the other thing that we need to consider is that this twenty thousand dollar limit that was put in quite a while ago, I think I wrote it was oh nine maybe, is no longer, it, it's no longer accurate at all. So I think we need to look at the raising that limit, but also I think it would behoove us to also include a thing that says this is the limit, but then also would adjust it for inflation every year because of the price of, exactly. So I, and I think that should happen with most of our fees and things is we should be able to adjust them for inflation every year because this twenty thousand isn't anything anymore. So I know it's technically a separate matter, but I think it's something we need to address at adjusting that number. I am kind of on the same section as Larry. I am totally okay with waiving the fees, but without us being able to note the last time an inspection was done on that, I think it behooves us to actually take a peek and make sure that it is actually okay and it's not, we put all this work into the I and I to keep anything out of there and all that excess flow. I mean, it, it could have been sixty years since that was the, yeah, and the street repairs and everything.
And all the things that got broken during that street repair. I, I do have some concerns with that. No, at no fault of the Sierra Vista Center that maybe we need a separate discussion about, but you know, another thing in here is that, you know, we do charge over four hundred dollars for the inspection permit fee, but we're not performing the inspection. We're certifying someone else's CCTV footage. So we're charging four hundred dollars for what's causing, costing a contractor three hundred dollars to do.
So, so the engineer, so Joe and Carl would actually review the video.
Right.
So that, so we are doing sometime, they're inspecting the video or reviewing the video and making a determination whether anything would need to be repaired. But yeah, four hundred dollars is a little steep.
So I'm just saying, I, I, I think that if we're going to do this the right way and we're going to make sure that we have complied, you know, with the situation that we've created as a city, I think my proposal would be to kind of put this on hold pending determination and then have us co, come back to the table to correct the issues that we've found as a result of this trigger with our code, make the necessary corrections and updates we need to make and then revisit, revisit that if, if that's something we could do instead, so that when we make the determination, we're doing it based on code. We're not doing it based on us deviating from code because right now, everything in here isn't, we will or we may, it's all, it all says shall over and over and over again through this entire ordinance. It's, it's very inflexible and that makes me very uncomfortable.
Counsel.
I think it's still in our purview to go ahead and waive it. I mean, it, it's, it's a simple wave, especially if we're going to look back and change ordinance. I do like the comments and, or the changes in the ordinance. I think they're necessary. And make some good adjustments to it, clean up, clean up the language.
Because to be fair, the others before us where I know there was protest to this, they didn't come before council. But part of the reason they didn't come before council is because of the fact that the protest period only actually triggers after the inspection and at the time that you're forced to do a repair. And at that point, the city manager has the sole discretion based on the criteria and the ordinance to determine if a hardship exemption, you know, is, is appropriate. And so I think that there may be other people who would be slighted if, you know, if we didn't at least address it. So you know, I would defer to our attorney. And if he feels that it is acceptable for us to provide a waiver when it is not something that's included in the ordinance, then I'm not going to argue with that. But if he does say that we should update the ordinance before providing a waiver, I, I would say, you know, that's what I'd prefer to do. Either way, I want to look at the ordinance and make sure we're fair to everybody.
You, you have authority to waive the fee if you would like to. It's, it's a legislative act of the city. You can go ahead and do it. I can also take a look at updating the threshold that triggers this requirement, the sewer inspection requirement. And we could take a look at either pegging the fee to inflation or delegating to the city manager authority to set the fee. I, I think either one of those might.
I like tying inflation.
You like pegging it to inflation? Okay.
Yeah, I think we should have a hard number there that's up to date. Set it to inflation, that that's the new trigger for if you have a permit, let's say, for example, your permit's fifty thousand dollars or, or higher worth of work. Maybe that's what triggers it. And then we put a CPI inflation calculator into that. And then as far as waiving the permit fee, that makes sense. I also would prefer to still have the footage taken. And then if we wanted to be kind enough, we could work with the community center to help them find a, a reasonably priced contractor to do it because a lot of times you can get someone to do that for under two hundred bucks.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's. I, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about adopting a, a resolution that requires the community center to do something because that's not what's before the council right now. And I think, I think there would be some issues with the council kind of doing a law for one kind of thing. If you want to waive the fee, I think you could do that. But I, I would hesitate to say we could require the service community center to do anything.
Well, technically, they're already required into the ordinance. It would just be us waiving the fee. So we wouldn't be adopting a resolution requiring them, the ordinance says they have to do it. We're not making a new requirement. We're just waiving a permit fee.
I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so that, that, that's the only thing. The question I think still on the table is if we want to waive the requirement and do we have the authority to waive the requirement? Are the two questions on the table still?
You, you have authority to waive the inspection requirement if you want to. I thought that's what you were asking and I apologize if I misunderstood the question.
So then I guess that makes the question for the council, do we feel comfortable waiving a requirement in addition to the concept of waiving the fee itself?
Seems, seems to me it's really two separate issues. You know, if we're talking about fees and things like that and who pays for them, that gets into the ordinance where we can just waive the inspection right now and deal with the other stuff separately. It just seems like opening that up right now. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just.
Well, it's actually the question, we have the right right now to say we will not waive the inspection, but we will, we are willing to waive the fee. Even though that's not what they're asking for, we do have a right to say we're willing to do that. But the real question is, because, you know, I've heard a couple of opinions that I haven't heard and, you know, Kim, you haven't given an opinion. Are you comfortable with waiving the actual inspection itself? That's the question.
Well, I like the idea of waiving the.
The, but not the inspection.
So then the motion would be made that we still require the sewer lateral certification, but we will make the choice to waive the fee.
Well, without an inspection, there is no fee, right?
Well, right, without the inspection, there is no fee.
Yeah, so we can waive the inspection and there we are.
But I see Sean's wheels turning and I really want to know Sean's thoughts on this as far as the inspection itself.
Because we just did the I and I project and we did do a thorough investigation of the lines and infill or inflow into the sewer there from the adjacent properties. I think it's an acceptable time to be able to waive the inspection at this point, especially since we're looking at raising the threshold for the amount of work that's going to be done. I think it's kind of forcing something on the Sierra Vista Community Center at this point that we already know we're going to change and push up above that threshold. If we hadn't just done the I and I project, which did the investigation of the sewer lines and the connections through the mains and all that, I'd be less in favor of waiving the inspection, but it's, the work's been done by the city in that area within the last year.
Is there sewer lateral run under School Street?
Yes.
Well, we, do we also have the option of saying we're going to table this then until we have rewritten the ordinance and then see if the dollar amounts trigger that requirement?
Oh, we do. And I feel like we can kind of.
Right now, how much, how much when labor was on the permit for the boiler?
Yes.
The total for the permit though, what was the total amount that was the cost to do it for the permit? Or I should say the value of the service for the permit?
Twenty four thousand.
I'm comfortable waiving the inspection. That's, that's where I stand. I, I do tend to agree because we, when we just did all that work on the road, one of the things that we did do is there were damages and we made those get repaired.
Yep, and we re-inspected after the repairs were made. So.
So with that in mind and with the most recent inspections with the smoke, yeah, I, I tend to agree on that one. Since we have the legal authority to waive the inspection, that's the part I was hung up on.
I think it'd be prudent to do that in this instance.
I think we're about to change on.
Exactly.
That's where I am.
Then I'll put the motion. On the, I'll, I'll go ahead and move that we, we waive the inspection. And that we specifically agendize adjustments to the ordinance for a future meeting, a very soon future meeting.
So I, I believe it would be a motion.
Right.
There is a resolution. I believe it'd be a motion to adopt the resolution.
Yeah, so I moved to adopt the resolution and, and then in addition, I have a second motion on the floor, which we can vote on at the same time to go ahead and agendize that for.
One at a time, okay?
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Stop direction and motion.
I seconded. I seconded waiving the inspection.
You got a meeting, you got a motion a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay, we move on to item.
The fun part.
Eight D, oath of the new council members.
It's just, it's twenty thousand dollars that we have to change.
Ready for the oath of office?
Okay, so if I can have council member Hilberg, council member McCauley and our city attorney Connor up to the front of the dice. Okay, so in lieu of our election this year, because we only had our incumbents file, fortunately, our city treasurer is not able to make it tonight, so he will swear in another night. But we do have council member Hilberg and council member McCauley and our new city attorney Connor Hargan. So they're all going to swear in this. So we'll start with I. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of council member, council member, city attorney. Upon which I am about to enter into and for the city of Colfax, county of Placer, state of California, according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Public comment. Any public comment? Next, item eight E, rotation of city offices, mayor and mayor pro tem.
I think you should take public comments. Our part after each and public comments.
Okay, public comment, that's, do I have public comment?
Should we describe with the agenda items?
Oh, yeah, it might help.
So. Under the city's policy for appointing the mayor and the mayor pro tem, the mayor pro tem rotates into the mayor's seat and then the city council votes on who gets to be the next mayor pro tem. And ideally, it is someone who has not served in the seat already. So Sean will, by operation of the policy, will move into the mayor unless the, the mayor's seat, unless the council would like to overrule that. And then the council will separately choose a new mayor pro tem.
I'd like to speak first here. This coming year, I have no intention or interest in serving either of those positions. And then secondly, I'd like to nominate Sean Loman for mayor.
I'd like to second what he just said in its entirety.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Abstained.
Motion unanimously carries.
So I have a comment on the second part. So was it two years ago, one year ago? There was a public comment brought up about feeling that the position of mayor pro tem should be held by somebody who was elected. But I'd like to point something out again for the second time tonight. These two are basically elected in the eyes of the law. There were no other candidates that stepped forward for election this year. And I want to point that out because very clearly there was no tangible incentive for the public to step forward and say, I can do a better job. I think I can find someone who can do a better job, et cetera, et cetera. And so in my eyes, well, I know Larry, you've already been very clarity of zero interest. I, you know, I'm, I would like to nominate Carolyn McCauley for mayor pro tem. And I would like to just very clearly identify that in my eyes, she just took the oath of office and holds all the same standing and weight as somebody who had to go through the process of collecting votes.
I want to second that. I would like to have Karen McCauley as my mayor pro tem. And I would look at it like you guys got elected with 100% vote of confidence there. And nobody came in. I mean, it, it's a small, it's a small voting pool. So if people don't like it, don't like what's going on, they definitely step up. We ran against 16 people, so. Yeah. Yes.
And when we ran again, we still had a whole group, so I don't know what we're doing wrong, but.
I know, right?
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Oh, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries unanimously. Any comments from the public? Next, item, item nine, go to the order, Sean.
See, gotta look at this, because I'm gonna say it wrong. It's tomorrow, I will be going with Amanda and Aaron. Thank you. Had a brain fart there. Amanda and Aaron to the Placer County Associate or Real, Association of Realtors meeting to talk about Colfax and pipe it up to why it's such a great place to be. So we'll be doing that. It should be a lot of fun. That's all I have. And congratulations.
Larry, say something good.
What are you looking for from me?
Anything good? Good, the bad, and the ugly?
Congratulations to the honorees. Not this year.
I actually want to thank the businesses that let the kids come out and paint their windows, because the holiday window painting has been going on. And with how Thanksgiving lined up on our calendars, we had a much shorter window to get it done. I think we had about 12 businesses and 12 different groups of kids that came out and painted. So the last one will be finished hopefully tomorrow. She didn't finish it tonight. But you've got about 12 businesses that have all got their windows all painted for the kids in preparation for Winterfest. And then, you know, as Amanda said, Winterfest is rain or shine. In the course of this meeting, somebody on Facebook asked that question. I was like, nope, they've already answered it. It's happening no matter what. Your Santa pictures will be next door in the theater. We will finish decorating it on Friday. You have your Santa pictures. You, they will have their like hot chocolate and snacks for sale. But we also have a model train, the Sacramento Garden Railroad brought in one of their model train setups. So they'll get to watch that and look at the fun stuff that's in there as well. And a little rain doesn't need to keep anybody away, because it is going to be a fun time.
I just want to remind people that the Colfax High School basketball team, the girls' basketball teams, they are selling tickets to their game in January. It's a home game against Marysville. If you are interested in purchasing a ticket, it also enters you for a raffle for a $500 valued prize of a bunch of goodies and Colfax team swag, a lot of fun stuff. If you're interested in getting one of those tickets, even if it's just to support the kids, you know, you can reach out to myself. I can get you in contact or I can get you all hooked up with what you need. I believe the tickets are $20. I'll double check. It could be 25 at the most, but $20, there we go. So 20 bucks, support the kids, please and thank you. That's all I got.
Can I backtrack for a second, Kim?
Oh, yeah.
Forgot something.
I'd like to backtrack too when the opportunity comes up.
Um, at Winterfest, you have, Colfax is hosting the first Gingerbread House contest. The Carosphere nonprofit is hosting that. There are no gingerbread contests in the Sacramento area whatsoever. So they've got some huge plans for next year to pull in some very big pastry chefs. So this could be a great event. You can go into the building that was known as the Old Railhead and vote for the Gingerbread Houses on Winterfest. Anybody can go in there and vote for People's Choice Favorite. And they will have a bunch of items in there as well for sale for holiday gifting as well. So make sure you stop in at the Old Railhead. The Gingerbread House is a bunch of marauders in the window. The curtains are open, so you can see them. But go in there during Winterfest, so you can all vote for them. So and I think they've got at least a dozen in there, if not more. But they have some big plans for next year and what they're gonna do with this contest, since there are none in the area whatsoever.
The thing I'd like to bring up has nothing to do with city business. I have a friend in Nevada City that suggests that all of us, instead of having resolutions for the new year, which we tend not to keep, that we instead keep it very, very simple and choose a word that represents what we would like to think about in this next calendar year. Just a word we can keep in our head. And for example, one year, a few years ago, I, I chose the word no, and it didn't work. Couple of years ago, I chose the word listen. That didn't work. Works sometimes. Then I chose hear. I was going to choose hear this year. But if you work at choosing a word, what I've found is the word will come to you. And so after I talked about it on the radio last Saturday, just coincidentally, I played a song and I realized that song is what I want to think about for this next year. And it's a Grateful Dead song called Ripple. And I am so somewhat disturbed by the state of our country and how we're all fighting each other. And, and I don't want to throw rocks. I don't want to make big splashes. I don't want to make waves. I'd just like to think this year of making ripples that just slowly reach out and, and reacting things in a positive way rather than all of this that we're seeing every time we turn on the television. So again, I encourage you to do it because it really does work. Just think of one simple word.
As long as it's not no or listen.
Yeah, right. I had one more thing I completely forgot to. I might have gone back to everybody else got to. Santa tour December 21st, the weekend after Winterfest, the Saturday after Winterfest. We're gonna be doing Santa tour again this year with the help of Cal Fire, CHP, Placer County sheriffs. And we will be starting at 5:30 on Hillcrest and working our way through town.
Done. All right, so I got another one. See, this is what memory does. Colfax is hosting their first ever Holiday Lights Contest. If you did not see it on social media, and there might have been a bunch of flyers handed on people's doorsteps last night in the dark while the houses were being checked out. So there is a Holiday Lights Contest that is happening. There are prizes involved. If you're in the city limits, you can call the office or email to have your address put on there. And then.
Who's office?
The city office. Yeah, I can't, I couldn't remember if it was the clerk address or which one. Admin, so the admin email. And then some of your council members will drive through and check out all the addresses. I think we said between the 18th and the 21st. And pick a favorite, which we will announce your first, second, and third places in January. So go put some lights on your houses. And then we're gonna do it again next year, but we'll let you know in November, so you can actually decorate on Thanksgiving weekend. So go put your lights up.
Okay, anybody else?
I decided I'm gonna be easier to.
My comment is based upon what Dr. Harry said about it's been a trying year, good, the bad, and the ugly. And Sean's coming in and I'm leaving. And I spent a lot of time in Auburn, actually, talking to merchants, trying to get them to open a store up here. So I've, I've met a lot of frustrations that nobody knows about because I'm in Auburn doing it. But there's also been a lot of good things. This city is, I consider, one of the best, one of the best towns in America. It's, and so I wanted to get in my last quote, and it's from a president who grew up in the same part of Pennsylvania that I grew up, James Buchanan. And when he left the office, Abe Lincoln was walking up the front steps. They shook hands and Buchanan, from my hometown in Pennsylvania, said, if you, if you are as happy entering the White House as I am leaving it, you're a happy man indeed. Anything good, Connor, or city manager?
Uh, no, nothing for me.
Uh, admin, city clerk? This is your chance. Speak now or wait for next year. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Public comment?
Public, go to the order, comment.
All right, motion adjourned.
I'm going to adjourn the post session.
Close this, close session.
Well, I think we should adjourn and then take a break and then.
Break.